Alright, we've got four members. Let's get this show on the road. We've got people who've... Can you hear me out there, Chris?
I can hear you.
Okay, so I'm gonna just kinda go through what I listed as agenda items. And if people feel they're not prepared to talk about it, and won't, we'll save the meeting next week. What do you want about building commissioner in Larry Wells' absence? Second one is the building checklist. I think that Pete had some involvement with that. You had some involvement.
He was fresh in those two.
Yeah, so we need to talk about that. 1613 Indianapolis, the two lots, actually three lots, I guess, with the word "end of day." Oh, there's 2000, Bell Plain, what we wanna do about the illegal work that was done there.
2000.
The house that's near the community center, in the backyard, that the papers in, about...
2200.
27, sorry, 22, I need my handbag. Wanna talk about making sure we're doing a lot of inspections? I think you're working on your...
I can hear me.
Oh, I can hear me.
Hear me?
A lot of inspections. You keep a lot on your inspections, right?
I can't hear anybody.
Pete, are you... Can you turn up your volume, Pete? Chris, you hear me, right?
I can hear you.
Okay, Pete, so something's going on with your computer. Oh, I guess I can't talk to him, I can't hear him.
I can't hear anybody.
But they can hear you, Peter.
How do you hear me, Pete? Is there a volume button on your computer, maybe? That's more like a government, you gotta X off over there.
This is probably gonna...
Probably what?
This computer's probably needs to shut the... Can you tell it fullscreen too?
Yeah, I can see it, yeah.
Just X your X, that's off there. There's the dog.
Pete, I'm sorry, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay. I guess I'll call Pete, maybe we can give him some instructions, huh?
Still no sound.
Maybe have him try to get out and go back in. I had sound issues when I first got here.
Hello?
So maybe try going out and then coming back in. So X off and come back in.
Okay.
Let's do that, see what happens. The other agenda items I had is questioning about a date on the Wilson hearing. 1900 Lake Shore Drive. I had some communication with Mr. Cronin. And then 1613 Indianapolis, agenda government, and that's the one about combining, that's right.
Is it 15 or 16?
1613.
Okay, I thought it said 16. 1613, yes. And that's 1900. And what's his name, Cronin, is 1902, correct?
Cronin is 1902, yes. Yeah.
I think I mentioned, after building, the first thing we said, I don't remember anything from these twelve pages.
Okay, yeah, we'll decide. You know, I was supposed to bring it, I forgot. Actually, you know who has it? Pete asked Deanna to get the...
Just what we're talking about. The second thing, it's got yellow and blue stuff.
I believe that's the first two pages. Yeah. Pete asked...
We asked Deanna about the extended procedure processes.
Okay, so then...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should've brought my...
If they, you know, move tighter than Deanna's, okay? Do you see that point?
Deanna, do you have that twelve-page checklist for building permits? Do you have that?
Yeah.
Could you bring us one?
Should we be able to look in there?
Yeah.
See what happens.
Yes.
I think you're gonna do it, thank you.
The twelve pages.
Mr. Wilson, please, Pete, can you hear us?
It works like this. We're not being too volatile.
Pete, can you hear us?
No.
Still not hearing anything.
Okay, are you still on your phone?
Yeah. When he goes to settings on Zoom...
Here. Peter, you on the phone?
No.
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
Okay.
Pete, try to go to the settings bar on Zoom. It's like the upper right. It's like a little wheel with dashes all the way around it. And it'll give you audio, video. You wanna go to your audio and see what your audio is. Should be the upper right corner. It's like a brown wheel.
I know, I know. I can see that on here.
Okay, how about if you go down to the right? Are you on your laptop or on a desktop?
Laptop.
On your laptop, on the lower right, under the toolbar down there, you see your sound. Click that on and see what it says for that.
Well, it's unmuted.
Okay. So if you click it on, does it slip all the way to the far right to maximum volume?
Yeah, Mark, there's an up arrow there, should be next to that mute, that should show, there's an option for audio settings. Switch to phone audio, leave computer audio, see those, Pete?
I'm not seeing any of that stuff.
But you can hear me.
It's recording.
On the Zoom link, you don't see the settings on the Zoom link at all?
No.
I mean, it works decent, I guess we could just leave the phone line for you.
Yeah, we could do that. We could ask the phone company to talk to you. Can I just do that?
Wait, wait, here's something here. Okay. Okay, I'm looking for audio here. Here's audio.
So you can't hear us at all, Pete, only from all the talking over the phone?
Only the phone.
Then you can see everything on your laptop.
Yeah, I can see everything.
And we can see and hear you, you're fine here.
Okay, go ahead, I'll just continue with this stuff and see what happens.
We'll pass it around, alright. Oh, that's Peter, I think that will work, we'll try, keep it fun. Alright, so we're gonna do some agenda items. First agenda item is, what do we wanna do in Larry's absence?
Take your guess about hearings.
Oh, yeah, we have two options. One would be to hire another building commissioner to take over until Larry comes back. However, building commissioner, first off, needs to be hired by the town council. Secondly, he needs to be a contractor with, I think, at least three or four years of contracting experience. He needs to be an engineer or an architect. I'm not sure who we've got who would do that. The other option is, is to be Larry's building commissioner. And, you know, we have had meetings in the past without Larry being here. And maybe we might approve for a month or two until Larry's able to come back. To me, that's probably the best option, but I'd open up the discussion. Go ahead, Joe.
Can I make an option to do number two?
Make a what now?
A motion that we agree and we vote number two. Where Larry will stay as the building commissioner. And as a building commission, the people on the building commission, we would help Larry in the council.
Yeah.
There might be times where Larry could not go out to a site.
Yeah.
He's just trying. And then Lou could go out, or maybe one of us could go, wait a little before he did to do that. And I think that's the best procedure.
Pete, can you hear that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Joe. End of discussion. All favorites? I'm the favorite, I.
You gotta be a name, sir.
Yeah, I can be you. John, what was it? Joe?
I.
Joe?
I.
Cool, alright, that's fine.
How about Pete?
Oh, I'm sorry, Pete, yeah. Pete, how about you?
You know, Ken, Ken was an electrical contractor. I don't know if that fills the bill.
Yeah, I think they specifically say general contractor.
Okay, I don't know if he ever filled that role. So I'll vote yes.
Okay, so we'll go with that, if not, it's not working, we'll be back here again. Let's see how that goes. Alright, the second thing I had on the agenda was the twelve-page checklist. And basically, Joe, I guess you're not familiar with this. I don't know, I think Pete has something to do with this.
Yeah, I don't know.
What do you want, okay.
I wanna make sure I know what we're involved on.
So I think we need to make sure that this gets, we either do away with it, because a lot of people aren't using it, or we insist that everybody who wants to do a major renovation or new house fills it out, and fills it out accurately. You know, I'm getting tired of looking at permit applications that say, "See the side setback." I'm sorry, if we're asking for what the side setback is, they need to give us a certain number of feet. Does anybody disagree with that?
No, I... I... And Chris, Lou, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay. And Chris, you might follow your chairs, but I agree with something you said last week, or whatever meeting it was, that we should get a little discipline and say, "We don't even review a building permit application unless it is completely filled out." And I agree with what Chris said, and I agree with that this right here.
Yeah. And Dr. Lemay, this is Chris, if I could go further in this kumbaya. I've had, as I've expressed, personal experience trying to help Deanna since the last building commission, wade through some of the stuff she's presented with. And, you know, some days she's presented with trying to interpret what the code says, and what somebody said, somebody else said. And so, yeah, I think to the extent we somehow stick to that process of, they submit the paperwork to her, they give her the money, and you guys are determining that, number one. And then, two, Dr. Lemay, just to add, in case you don't have a note of our discussion, because it's gonna come up at a hearing in the near future, having some adequate proof of the value of the job. And, you know, we have one that is very egregious in terms of the estimate of what the project is versus what it turns out. And, you know, I don't think it's out of the... I don't think it's unreasonable for you to expect that they could substantiate the value of their project that they put on the application.
So maybe we include that on this, and tell them, maybe you show us proof of what they have in mind. The other thing that's come up recently for us is the access issue at Stop 19, right? 19? So maybe another thing that went down here is, are there any anticipated access issues that the building commission needs to be aware of? What do you think of that, guys? And, yeah? Better than...
Yeah, I agree with everything Chris is saying and we're saying. The only, one issue I have is to try and give it and write it, and get us all to agree. Because like you said, and Chris, I feel this may be necessary, I will apologize to you if you thought that I was attempting to inform perfection at the last meeting. I had my way of saying things. I respect you, but also what I do is that, and it's boring that way, I always ask questions. And if any of us were giving an opinion, and I think I have a right to ask anybody, much as you, Chris, your opinion and explain it to them. And that's what I was doing, and I think if I had more conversations with you, I'd wait, maybe you might, before the meeting, we could go over any ordinances that I had questions about. So that's where I think we have to be, is review our ordinances, get to a point, then we all agree with them, and we agree with the interpretation. That's sometimes where we run into, and had our meetings where we argued about those.
Yeah. And probably the place to have the discussion, this is probably after me, is it to be, you know, an open discussion?
Well, I mean, like, for example, if, so Chris could be prepared, if I have a question about a particular ordinance, I think people do it now, particularly beginning. You could call and just say, "Chris, what are you saying, blah, blah, blah?" And then we could say, "Okay." Then maybe my question was nothing, or my question was substance.
Right.
And if it's nothing, Chris says, "Joe, that's all Chris said," and we look at it, like, "Thank you." And then we wouldn't have to waste the time of the meeting.
Right.
So I think I'm walking my fine book where I'd like to be able to communicate with Chris, and go over the ordinances, if I feel necessary. I think that's why I'm writing this.
What we've done to facilitate that discussion is to include Chris on the emails from Deanna. When Deanna sends us the building permit application, Chris is now included on all those. And so any comments that we make are gonna be going to Chris, so that way he can do his homework before the meeting.
And Dr. Lemay, so that we stay transparent and we don't get ourselves in foul of open door stuff, it might be appropriate to shoot questions my way, and, you know, not engage in the group, but for me to, again, to, when necessary, give a memo on a specific one. You know, Joe might have a meeting where things are, they apply to all 10 permits, or there might be a specific one, but maybe it would be appropriate to prepare a memo that's issued to all of you, if it's necessary. I mean, some may just be a simple question, and, you know, but at least, you know, not to drag it out, not to add more, but, yeah, not debate what the code is. And there's sometimes that's necessary, so I'm not saying that. But I think some of these questions might be able to be answered, and everybody be prepared and aware of the options and what's applicable prior to. I mean, all of that, I agree.
You know, the only thing I wanna make clear, and, you know, we're all different, I do better what I'm gonna do. I feel much better, and I really feel that a lot of times when I have some questions, I would love to discuss it with Chris, because I believe Chris is the lawyer of the building commission, and he's my lawyer. And I feel that I would like to have the door open for communication.
Okay, 1613 Indianapolis, that's the three lots. I think we've all gotten, seen a letter from the assessor's office.
What did the lawyers do?
The letter is on the email today or yesterday, but basically what it said was, yes, two lots in Michigan City, one is in Long Beach, but the assessor's office has them listed as one property. Correct? So I think, my feeling is that that meets what our requirement was, was that they be combined. And therefore, I think that permit should be able to be issued. But go ahead, Joe.
I'm totally confused, because, and I had to review a conversation I had. And I asked some questions. And we used the word parcel, I guess the parcel is correct or incorrect? Is we say, "We wanna deal with one parcel." And that's what we tapped, guys, that have three lots in Long Beach, we have them combine the lots, and it becomes one parcel. And as a one parcel, as a singular taxing code number, that counts.
Well, we can't have one taxing code.
That's right, I understand, let me, I understand what I'm saying. So therefore, now what we have is a property, properties, that one is in Long Beach, and two are in Michigan City. Okay? Now, let me just stop and give an example, see what you can think about. Hypothetically, and in this particular case, there's a property that's all in Michigan City, where this gentleman's garage is on that property. And it's in Michigan City. Now, if he wants to do anything, everything, nothing, to that garage, I believe we can't tell him any more ordinances and tell him what to do, because he's in Michigan City. Is that correct or incorrect? What, are we here, we're walking a funny line? Maybe, Chris, maybe, you would know, I don't know who would know, we can't determine what the guy does on his Michigan City lot?
I agree.
So, therefore, how then do we take the line and say, "Oh, you can use that for you 35%?"
Joe, I think sometimes exceptions need to be made. And what do you want us to do, raise every property that's in part Michigan City and Long Beach? I mean, we can't...
Go ahead, I'm just here to worry about you, too.
I think we need to be, make reasonable exceptions for properties that are in both jurisdictions. And this, I think, is one of those reasonable exceptions that we need to consider.
Okay, but, okay, that's what you think, but I really think, which Larry preached every meeting, if there's a reasonable exception to make, I don't know, and that's what you guys can tell me, because I'm going to the car, I don't know, that's within our domain to do that. Because we abide by the ordinances, we don't make exceptions. And if there's exceptions to be made, you go to the BCA, you don't come to the property.
We cannot, we cannot in any way approve, deny anything that has to do with Michigan City. Whether it's one parcel or 10 parcels, all we can do is, on our property, apply our laws. And I'll quote, or I'll cite a certain example. This is what happened at Stop 31. When we, as a town, approved a building permit for that house, the mistake on the lake, and then it caused us infinite problems, where we ended up having to spend money to acquiesce that property. And that resulted in issues with Long Beach Realty, who was then renting their property, and it just went on. We can't, we cannot do anything with a Michigan City property, period.
Now, I didn't mean, I was gonna say something. Okay, so what, I didn't get the proper terminology in the conversations later. But there's an option, where I believe, and Chris, maybe you don't know, I know we're hitting you, so I'm not expecting you to understand all of us right now, but they could, and I don't know the name, so I apologize for the decision, but they could bring that property into Long Beach. There's a procedure they can go to, to bring that property into Long Beach.
It's called acquiescence. And that's what we did with the property of 31.
It's an asset issue, right? That's an asset property from another town, right?
I don't, Lou, I didn't know you were a lawyer, I don't know what it's called, but I'm just, that's why I didn't say it, I didn't give an example of a name. I don't know what it's called, but that's something that can be done by the homeowner to bring in. That's all I'm saying. We could look into it, but I think that's...
Michigan City had to agree to it, too, obviously.
Exactly.
But there is a procedure, you know?
Exactly.
The spirit of purpose of this ordinance is to avoid people on, typically on Lake Shore Drive, from having two properties, putting a debt on one house on the other, and then saying, "Just saw the other lot." This guy, this three little lots, he's not himself, he hasn't, he separated his house, none of them could be sold, that the only ones big enough for a residence, right? So, the spirit of purpose of this is not ingrained right here, right now.
And you're going way over my head, because I have no idea what the spirit of purpose is, and I don't know if I'm gonna hear, I'm trying to write about it, I'm trying to...
What did we do with 1300 Lake Shore Drive?
We made it a state.
The old Bell property.
We made it a state.
Well, I guess I haven't disfigured it.
Let me finish it. I was gonna break it up. We did two things wrong. One, we never asked them to combine the two Long Beach properties. Those two Long Beach properties were never combined, at 1300. And also, there's that Michigan City property. So I think we're walking, and that's only two that I know. I don't know how many there are, I don't think there are that many. And I think there are solutions, but I think we have to be careful over here.
So if we ask Michigan City to acquiesce those two lots, and they say no, are we gonna acquiesce to them, so these poor people can build? I mean, how does this work?
Excuse me, when it occurred at Stop 31, that was a county property. And the county had to agree, or basically agree, that we could, that Long Beach could acquiesce that property. So if we were going to acquiesce it, that's something that the homeowner would have to initiate with Michigan City, or we would, and they would have to agree to it. And then there's a procedure for it, that we went through for Stop 31. And it not only included that, the house on the lake, but a strip of 100 feet wide up Garwick Road. I'm sorry, Moore Road. So there, but, now, if this guy has the ability to build his project in Michigan City standalone, he can do that. I don't know if that's been cleared.
The project is on Long Beach property.
Pardon?
The project is on Long Beach property.
And we have also already permitted him to put a new driveway on some of Long Beach property, and it's hopefully sufficient to...
Chris, can you weigh in on this?
I haven't talked to the city and seen how amenable they are to it. And, in the mean, when's your next meeting?
A week from now.
Yeah, by then I'll have an answer, either what they're amenable to, or if there's an exception somehow in the state statutes that will allow that.
Okay. So Chris is gonna talk to Michigan City, bring it back, next meeting?
And then you should also, I brought it up, I think we should also just review 1300.
Well...
Chris, Luke Mann was the one who managed the acquiescence of that property, so they would...
I'm aware of when that went down, I think I was a whippersnapper back then, so, yep.
Okay.
I mean, really, this whole corner is a problem, we look right across the street from the horseburgs. That property, their house is covering, their house is in Michigan City, and the address is in Long Beach.
But if they're not asking, they'll refuse to submit.
No, but why wouldn't we be wanting to hear the whole thing, the whole...
I don't think that's our task, to go, personally, I don't have any insurance, you're not gonna be saying, somebody presented a permit application, we're refusing it. We're not reviewing the town of Long Beach, to see if they're correct. You can be sure of that, I think that...
We'll bring it back next meeting, that sounded good. So Lou, you confirmed that you do have an inspection law. I was talking to Mr. Cronin, he was concerned that he didn't think that Mr. Wilson's work at one of the properties, or he undermined his law, that that was being watched and documented. Any comment on that, or...
Yeah, what happened there, is we ruled out one, so our package, and the rule that Danny walked out on, and also brought in the spat, it was exposed.
Okay. And so, there really wasn't an opportunity for you to expect it was done.
It could have happened in two hours.
Yeah, got it, okay. I just wanted to make sure we had as much documentation as we need. I have a feeling that that whole situation there is gonna be headed in litigation, and I just wanted to be sure we've got our documentation. Chris, are you good?
Just to see, are we staying on 1900?
No, no, I didn't move down.
But you said on 1900?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. I noticed that we received a couple of building permit applications, taking Mr. Wilson out of the picture, and putting other people in. And I noticed one of them, at the same time, was one of them was a roofer, Rogers Roosley, good company, and everything else. And then, because of the situation, I mean, they have just about, if they have six feet side setback, they're liable. It's probably a little bit less than six feet side setback. And before we get into any more arguments about what happens, is for a roofer to put his ladder in between six feet, and not to walk on either side's property, seems rather difficult, and I don't know, and we're looking for, how do we address this, so we don't get, sorry, just the roofer, for example. Would the roofer say, "Oh, shit was found on this guy's property, or that guy's property." How do we get through this, or is there a solution, or what are your guys' ideas on that?
Well, that thing on that we were gonna add to the checklist about access issues? that would kind of fall under that. So, I imagine you'd need to have a note from the neighbor saying, "I don't mind if they, because they're putting their ladder on my property."
But not for me to, to say I know what it is. But hypothetically, if it's me and my neighbor, probably they does not like me at all. And I go to Bob, and I say, "Bob, you know, you said, 'No, Joe, don't touch my property.'" How do I, what do I follow?
That would be one of those access issues we'd have to consider. Yeah, it's kind of like, well, the perfect example is, is I did have a conversation with the fellow who's talking about Mr. Cronin now, and I forgot his name now.
Jordan Goodst.
That's the guy, yeah. And he wants to, well, Mr. Cronin wants him to repair that retaining wall so that his patio doesn't collapse. And he asked, "What should I do?", and I said, "Submit a permit." And he said, "Well, okay, but can I bring equipment down?" And I said, "Well, that's yet to be determined." And he said, "Well, we could hand dig, there's a way around that. Maybe the roofers go up on the other side of the house, climb up on the roof." But that, they need to address that on their permit application.
But the issue, just what you said, you're gonna get the permit on the other side too, because both sides are less than six feet.
Yeah, but that's up to the ordinance, you know, they need to tell us how they're gonna do it.
Okay, so that's number one, let me just go on. That's number one. Number two is that another, a different group now put in for the pool, which is good. So, I'll stop right there, I'll get back to that in a minute. But that tells me right now, if these permits are approved, that Mr. Wilson is not on any approved permit. And Mr. Wilson then has absolutely no work that can be done in Long Beach because there are the permits that he's on, if this works, is that correct?
At this time, that's good.
Well, because he only had the two properties, one was the 1900, and one was the 2516. And that's it, I just wanted to clarify that, okay? Not only more records. Now, this new pool company coming in, I don't know if you guys look at it carefully, but when we, we figured out that we do have a relationship with LaPorte County, and they do have, want us to come, give us a swimming pool on Lake Shore Drive. They want us just to come in for the builder, just to review with them what they're doing and make sure the stream is perfect, okay? So, that's what happened with Mr. Wilson and LaPorte. But in that discovery, if you look at, we've got an email. There's a beautiful site planner that's given the raw history off of Mr. Tate, whether it's, whether Tate or not, they're using off of that. And they have two circles by the deck. And it shows where they have the drain, what was, what was thanks called, drywall. Shows two drywalls in a certain position, okay? But then, which we never had before, then what he submitted, what Mr. Wilson submitted to LaPorte was a completely different diagram where it had a drywall. And on this diagram, we have only two drywalls, no setback. It shows a drywall, it shows a setback, and then it shows two drywalls over here. So, I think there has to be a review of where all of that, where all of that is, and who's creating these diagrams. The diagram that I'm referring to was from 1984, was all sketches. I'm not saying that whole post number is perfect, but they're in the general position. And this blue diagram that we got doesn't even show us where the setback is. It just shows us where two drywalls are. And when Larry, we read an email that Larry sent a while ago, he's he felt that the drywalls that are on the diagram, that they're setting, that show the two drywalls, they're within 10 feet of the posts for the deck, which would be not proud. Now, the first thing that everybody should say, "Well, you know, LaPorte approved it." If you read what LaPorte approved, it just says, "From what we're given." That's all the approval based on what we're given. And I think we need to review it and make sure, because that's the worst thing we want to do. I mean, you've got two of you guys who've spent tons of time on the stores and everything else. This is especially, and Lake Shore Drive, Lakeside, we try to make sure that it's all right. Even though we did it one time, before we reviewed this, too, permit, we had to review these issues.
I'll stop. And so, regarding that 1900 Lake Shore Drive, Chris, would it be more appropriate for us to look at that building pool permit and then have it go to the town council regarding access issues? Or should that be done in reverse, or does it make a difference?
It makes a difference, it's, obviously, they need it, right, one way or the other. But if it's not gonna fly, you might not waste the councils. You need to do it, timing of it doesn't matter to me. It's just, you should give a look at it. I mean, the council meeting's coming up, so if I'm looking in a practicality standpoint, you know, if the council were inclined to consider it, they could always approve it, subject to, or whatever terms they're gonna have, one. And two, contingent on approval by the Building Commission and issuance of a permit, or variances, or whatever is gonna be required.
And regarding that, I spoke with Mr. Cronin this last week. Of course, he's not happy with Mr. Wilson. He was wondering about the bond issue and all, and I feel that's way beyond my expertise. And any problem between them would probably be a civil suit, wouldn't involve the town. And that was a lot of start, and again, I talked with Mr. Gaff, who's his representative, who was trying to get this cool done. Next thing on my agenda was, do we have any close any dates for that hearing on Mr. Wilson?
I actually was left open-ended with Mr. Damske. So, I would ask you all to set a date that, I need 10 days. So, if you give me a date that's about 14 or so out, you could set one today. And I'm just going to use that as the notice.
All right, just set a date, and anybody tell me if they have a problem, that's all, okay?
Yep. For instance, like the 22nd, does that work, or any? Because we're on the weekend here, any week, anytime during the week of the 18th?
You know, I guess I can take a look at the calendar and see what that looks like as far as other meetings for the town. But I'll get back to you probably later today on that.
I would like to have at least 14, I need 10, but that way for processing and that. So, you and I can coordinate, as long as everybody else will set it. But I, like I said, I've received confirmation from Mr. Damske that we should just go ahead and accept it.
Okay, Chris, I can ask the rules. If I can't make the meeting personally, will I be able to vote from, I assume this could be...
If we have a quorum present, and you can be seen and heard, present live, that is.
I'm sorry, Chris, I thought you said, "Such seen and heard, can I vote?"
Yeah, you can vote if you can be seen and heard, and we have a quorum that's present live. So, you can, you can be remote or electronic, you can vote if you can be seen and heard by the public.
Okay, and just for clarity, I apologize if I didn't do nothing. But when you say, "So, you need four people in person with our committee," is that correct?
Yep, just like today.
Listen, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Right, that's all I have on my agenda, did you have anything else you wanted to talk about?
Bob, you did mention, and I don't think we talked about, two, I don't know what your concerns were, I'd be very interested, 2600, you're going.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, it's seven. Okay, so, at a previous meeting, we, I think we decided to issue a citation because papers were put in, and then I believe, wasn't the treehouse an issue too? Without permit? And so, those structures continue to exist, right?
Yeah, we're issuing the citations.
But they're both done, right?
Right.
So, the property owner is, at this point, enjoying those additions to their property. And are we done? I mean, is that how this works? Because that doesn't seem right. I opened it up to the Building Commission.
What do you mean, "Are we done"?
Well, we've issued two citations, so it costs the owner $200 to build two illegal structures which continue to exist on the property.
Okay, so, why wouldn't we now take this to court?
Chris, where can, am I, have we done that, or?
I don't even know where we are in the process, so, again, give me, this is the house by the community center? Okay?
Chris, I wanted to, Chris, but can I just, before we go any further in that direction, I think the one thing that we sometimes we all do, I'd like to review is, when you said that they didn't have a building permit to build the playhouse, I don't think that's correct. And I, and I heard it wrong, but before we go too far.
I agree with that, and just, part of the issue on this property is there has been a lot of discussion, and then some correction of the issues along the way, and then some other violations develop in the process of that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Lou, in my summary, but they bring some part in compliance, and then there's something else. So, that's why I say, "I don't know where we are in this process," because there was a fence issue that was fixed, right? That there was a lot of issue, and they were combined. And that, that playhouse, treehouse, whatever it was, originally told they could build it, but then it turned into, you know, a guest home. So, part of me is, I think we need to get a true, a true picture of what the heck's going on here. Because this is the property we made the 10-day demand, and that we were gonna employ our own and exercise the rights under the statute to take it down, and that got attention. So, part of it is, I don't know where the communication level is, and what formally has been done, and what's not. So, from my perspective, it's premature to give me any other direction other than a demand that they bring it in compliance. And, actually, if you recall, and every, that 10-day letter we sent originally, maybe that's where we start. Or at least give a summary out before the next meeting of all the violations that exist and what needs to be fixed.
Lou, Lou, there was also a paver issue on that property.
Right, now, that's for property. Okay, that's why we gotta be clear, then it's not on that property, it's on the next. They own both properties, but the paver issue, the first paver issue is more, was on the next door property. Which they own. The first issues that we had, and it's still an issue whether we approved that playhouse correctly or incorrectly, because if you look at it, it looks like a huge, it looks like more than any of them. And also, if it's a playhouse, then they also added a deck, which you could take a nice little round deck form, or the deck is a two-story deck for a playhouse. I don't understand them at all. And then, after that, they came and they put in another fence along the side. That sounded, they did it all the time. And then, when I just got live, I was with Lou, I see lumber in the yard, and I see how that thing is going. So, there's quite a bit going on, but we should be, and I don't disagree with anything you guys have thought or say, but I think we just have a role and make sure we know which issues we're talking about. That's all, we need to clarify, that's all, that's me.
So, Lou and Joe, have you guys put together kind of a timeline of what's happened that we bring back to the next meeting? Would that be a reasonable next step?
Well, yeah.
Because that's what we need, right, Chris, is a timeline of what's happened and what hasn't happened?
Yeah, it may be already there from what Lou submitted. Like I said, I don't know any rhyme or reason between those properties, it's what has happened. So, whatever helps you to be able to make decisions, I'm, I just need the documentations of the violations and what's actually there.
Well, let's try and bring that back to the next meeting, if you guys could do that, you know, the permit application, permit approvals, is that what you call it, a playmansion? The homeowner asked the Building Commission, "Do I need a permit to build a playhouse?", and he said, "No," and then it became a playmansion. So, you know, all that sort of thing needs to be out of this so we can make sure whatever we decide to do is just blacked out. So, I'm just making sure it's on the agenda. I don't have anything else, anybody else?
I just had, I had one song, is, and then, something we've talked about forever, and maybe I didn't pay attention, but the one on Oakwell, where they built a house, or the pool, whatever it's called, Pool House, maybe, is what it's called. They built a pool house, and like I said, just to give you my interpretation, so, like, sometimes they think differently. But I believe, number one, that if it's a pool house, I don't see where they're violating any hydraulics. I don't see that they're violating any hydraulics. What ordinance, what they're violating, two things in my mind, is number one, they did not put that house in their original plans. That was not on their original plans, that's number one. And then, number two, which is this ordinance, the tricky ordinance, that that property is, the perimeter, three sides of that property is on streets. And there is the old ordinance with the street. And you gotta be 30 feet, because that's where the, you gotta be 30 feet, because that's the ordinance for our one. And you gotta be 30 feet away from the street. Now, the walls there, a negative of the wall can be there, but that structure is not 30 feet away from the street. So, in my mind, like everybody else, I'm trying to be clear on this particular property, those are the two things that I saw are being violated. And the first thing, and the not being on the property, not being on the building permit, the structure, everything.
The one in the original pool house, there was a pool house where this one is now, this is just a digger.
There was something, but the only thing is, I'm intent, we get into, which we do a lot, is you'd be saying, "Well, that pool house was grandfathered." Well, they actually rebuilt that house, so there's no grandfathering going on. So, and you have your benefits given, in my opinion, to that. It doesn't matter if it was there or not, number one, they never had it. They took it off, so they didn't save it or do it, because it wasn't on the property. And if you think of the grandfather, I don't take this discussion, that the grandfather would apply because this is the house.
Plus, the property is non-conforming because of the setback violations, and they increased the volume of pools. They made it tall.
Okay, well, I'm familiar, I apologize, I'm just being logical. If I say that there was no pool house on the current, so therefore, wherever the pool house they built can't be relative to the bottom of the old pool house.
You're right.
Because we're not even looking at the old zone. All we're looking at is the new pool house. And all I'm saying is, the new pool house has two problems. One is not ready to be from the street, and two is that it wasn't a building permit.
And at the last meeting, we voted daily fines, and they are continuing to accumulate.
And that's all, I just wanted, with everything we've talked about, our communication, et cetera, et cetera, how do we, you know, NHV, how do we know where things are at? Is there a way to get reports or something, so that, this is where this project is at? That's why I'm, I don't know, is there something going on where I'm not with that project?
Chris, they were notified of the daily fines, right? No, Chris, are you there?
Yep, they froze up, what was that?
Folks at Indian, on Oakwell, were notified of the daily fines that we voted at the last meeting, correct?
Well, they would only be notified by their, by citation. I haven't, I haven't sent them any demands yet. I haven't, I haven't sent them any demands yet.
No citation.
All right, so how do we get, we gotta get this process straight. Because like last meeting, we voted that they, they would be assessed daily fines until they're brought in.
Well, I don't, I don't assess them, but I, for simplicity's sake and your, and your frustration, why don't I, before the next meeting, Lou and I will speak and make sure that we send them correspondence and any citation that's there. How long has that sat there? The question I have. How long is that project, but done?
Probably within at least three months.
Okay.
Three months? Yeah.
All right. So Lou and I, I, I will work with Lou and counsel to make sure that we have the citation, that any citation that is there or hasn't been written is properly issued and I will stick it along with a letter emphasizing your points before the next meeting. Assuming that's what the commission wants to have happen.
Everybody agree that's what I have? Okay. Anything else that you thought about?
I've got a couple. One, on the, on the procedure for approving or for validating that a permit has sufficient information for us to proceed, how, how is that going to be done? Who's gonna make the final statement that says this, this permit, we have enough information to go ahead here?
Absolutely. So we'll have a meeting looking at permits and of course, we have the comments that, at least that I make and Joe makes sometimes. So Lou, when we run those comments that we don't have adequate information, do you go back to them and say, we need this? Or how is that working? Because I'm not sure that's our responsibility, that you need to. Are you doing that now or not?
Why don't we get the list of names? I'm, I'm in here with one day, you want to talk about it?
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm trying to proceed. So, you know, we're trying to figure out how to get the information. Right now, we've talked about what we want to add to this checklist, because we're actually gonna add to it. And I try to think, Deanna, what we should do is put a sign outside your office saying, permits will not be considered by the building commission unless all the information is still being, all the relevant information is still there. And then we have the meeting and decide if we have all the information. Go ahead, Deanna.
Can I say something?
Yep.
So there are times when I see your email chains.
Yeah.
And I think that it's something that I can just go ahead and call the contractor and say, the building commission is actually looking for a large survey, can't be cut into pieces. They are expecting a C block coverage calculation. There are times that I'll go ahead and call, I, you know, if I receive an email chain that will say it's something that's just between you members, I don't. So I mean, I'm hoping that that's okay, that there are times I'll call the contractor and say that this is it, the building is questioning this or this, can you submit it?
Well, it, it just, it seems to me that it's not the responsibility of the town to do their work and you've got plenty to do on rent.
As a courtesy.
So I think a sign outside your office that says this needs to be completed in detail. And then, you know what, they can come to that building commission meeting and find out that, that it wasn't adequate. Because I just don't think we should be chasing these people around for the information.
And I do have a whole box, you should see the stuff I'm opening, of course, I was, you know, I'm waiting, they say they'll send it, it's still sitting here. And then it takes time to actually put it all back together, so you can have a little mail back in there, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, let, let me.
Well, this is, Chris, just one more thing on there. I mean, at some point, in trying to use the common sense approach, hopefully your meetings aren't spent on determining, in my mind, we're gonna, easier said than done, finding and designating a, an individual to determine that the packet is sufficient to even be discussed at your meeting. I mean, you, you spend the bulk of your time kicking around what people don't have and trying to, and rightfully so, right? Trying to move projects forward, trying to help people out and especially in these times with contractors and prices and all of those things, but, you know, see, that designation has to happen before it even gets on your plate. In my mind, I, I don't know the best way to do that, but sitting and hashing it out at a meeting is one of Mr. Coker's favorite pastimes and I hate to take that away, but spending three hours to determine that someone's still missing a, you know, I can point to joy and she has, you know, a project that has driven her bonkers because she said the same thing for at least eight plus months of getting us a site, right? Or getting us a state survey. Shouldn't even be on your plate until that is determined prior to a meeting.
Okay, so a suggestion. The, the, the point, there's one central point where all of the pertinent information exists for us to make a decision and that's Joe. So I would suggest that when the stuff, and the stuff has, basically goes to Joe first so that we don't get permits issued without review and all that kind of stuff. So if Joe has enough information and we should put it on a checklist, like we want a site plan, we want this, are they there? Bang. If, if the four items are there, we should consider it. And, and to my mind, Joe is the one place who has, the first place to understand if it's sufficient to make a decision. And that's where I think the responsibility could and should go, that's up to Joe. But it's up to you guys. Yes, no?
How is the contractor who sends in an incomplete application gonna be notified that it's not complete?
I would say that they get an email, right? And if we need to follow up with a letter, but most are putting their emails on the application and if they don't, they could indicate otherwise, but an email that copies the entire building commission in the clerk's office, so everybody's on the same page of this isn't sufficient, here's your deficiencies and until these are satisfied, not gonna be set for consideration.
An email is required on, on the application.
And, and to the extent it happens where somebody doesn't have one and they put it out, applicable, send them a letter, give them a phone call and put in a letter, we tried to call you and here it is. I mean, I, I don't know a better way for you guys to do.
I think first of all, we need to set the parameters on, on what's to be, who's to be required to do this, okay? A lot of these contractors are not gonna have a clue what this forms about. And I can tell you that even better contractors don't know how hard this is that well, that they can fill this out. I think we're asking for the sun in the room here to get some of you guys, I mean, I would say maybe that's 20% of the contractors that we need to talk to now, who do business with now, that are capable of this. So do we ask for this only in situations where it's running wrong or perhaps $250,000 renovation? But, you know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get some of these contractors giving the most to have an idea of this as well.
Well, you know, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you, or with you, or with you, but as the other gentleman is not here, but he pointed out, well, is when they fill out the registration forms, there's yes and no answers that they have to fill out. And a lot of them says that they know their ordinances now. I don't know, and that's an interesting concept or question, is how much do, do they have to know their ordinances? I mean, I know, there's others, they should know our ordinances. And maybe is that maybe too tough? I don't know. I, I don't really. If you're gonna build, you better know, if you're gonna use two-by-forths or two-by-sixes or whatever else. And that's the building specs, Mark, but also they should know what we expect from the staff. And then number two, in line with what Pete is, what Pete is suggesting, I possibly could say it's not a bad idea, but I would add one thing, is that everybody gets a copy through the email. And, and I would expect, if you guys want me to be looking at, I would expect from everybody, at least on each permit, or real elusive, if we have restricted permits required, but I would expect an email from each one to say, I, I don't need anything else. Because then I know everyone's looking at these permits. Now, maybe what Lou's suggesting is that if they're gonna put in five windows, then the project's gonna cost $10,000. You know, that, that we can do easily. I can handle that really easy and we can approve it because we're doing our things. I think we need to come up with some criteria, that way if it's a, if it's a good building, I would think everybody should, you know, do they have the time? I hope so, because we're on this committee and they should send, okay, these are some of my questions that I can't get answered. And I just, we forgot how we're gonna pass those on to the votes.
So how about if we say we want this checklist filled out if you're building a new home or if you're changing the footprint or buying?
Well, plus, if you're adding a deck, you know, if you're still there.
Right, adding a deck is where we often don't get the information. That's, 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 that's kind of a twerking over there. It doesn't possibly put it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We get it, but I, I, I agree.
Right, and you shouldn't have to do that. That's, that's my problem. You know, this isn't, Michigan City doesn't do this.
Is that inviting, you know, all these guys on the phone and say, we need this, we need that? And they don't answer, they don't deferment, and then they wonder why.
So I personally think there's a lively conversation, but I think we need to kind of iron it out, see what we want, because the other thing, and I guess I'm, you know, usually I'm the only one, so I guess I can look at it for, I don't worry, I'm the only one that feels that way, but the one thing which I think Lou says quite good, we gotta love them and so does Larry a lot of times, well, it's only inside work. Well, and, and the job costs $150,000 now. Well, if it's inside work, it costs $150,000. I'd like to see some done with. I mean, don't you say inside work or, and that's all I like to see some details and to like to, which we don't know, is see all the cells. I mean, Joe knows that I'm gonna go on work, he's gonna, he's gonna be hiring cells to do the work, deploying the electric, et cetera, et cetera.
And see it, et cetera.
Yeah, well, I know, but that doesn't do it. Again, that's the other thing I keep saying to, to you or anybody else, I need to get everything or Deanna needs to get everything because we're the ones who tie home the paper for Deanna as everything that we do for the clerk. There's a responsibility of the clerk to have all the documentation. Deanna has all of that in PDFs, et cetera. The only thing Deanna doesn't keep is the big ones that she gives over to me and I keep those in, I keep those in room three and I keep the other papers. But my point is always that, that the clerk's office is satisfied by all the hard work that Deanna's doing, is she's creating all of the, it's on PDF, on emails, that's why we all get the emails, because Deanna has it and she gets it's all of us. So she has it for the clerk. If there's anything extra that, that anybody's giving, I don't care about the comments, but specifically about the building, that should be sent to me and Deanna, so she doesn't cover them all. Do you want to say anything there?
So if we said, you know, that I guess second $250,000 is probably too low, I'd say $100,000, or changes the footprint or buying, would that catch the majority and minimize how much work Lou has to do chasing these guys down? Or can't?
Are you, are you saying like, $100,000 project, you gotta fill out everything?
No, no, only the relevant parts, because a lot of this isn't relevant, but just the relevant parts. And, you know, again, I don't wanna have them say, you know, setbacks, see the site. Put down the setbacks so we can, we can look at it, you know? Because, you know, the idea is not to make the contract with YBT, it's easier, but to minimize how much work our people have to do and how much work we have to do in reviewing these from that application. I mean, to me, that's, that's the issue. Because the more work we have to do, the more things we have a chance to screw up on and then there'd be unhappy, there'd be this. Is that, I guess I, and I, and Lou, I understand that maybe some of these people aren't able to do it, maybe they need a high secretary, you know? I mean, this is their, you know, they, it's like, that's like when I practice in medicine, when they change medical record, damn, I gotta figure out how to do this now? Well, it's either figure out how to do it or retire, you know? I mean, that's kind of how it works.
I would suggest to start with that we use this form for new law to start.
Excuse me, there is one page or I'll get rid of the form that escaped to kill that said this needs to be revised. It is a statement that says this is what's required for an issuance of a permit. So if that's been what's passed out to contractors and that's not enough, maybe that should be revised, that one page tells everything they need. But that doesn't include where it says, see checklist.
Right, it's inspection checkers.
No, that's not the checking checklist. That's the thing that says what's required for issuance of a permit.
Yeah, maybe Deanna, in quick, can you, can you copy that and send it out to all of us and what we can do if we have that at the next meeting and we can continue this discussion then? I think that, because we obviously have quite big.
That's been, let us score as well, I can remember, by someone, Aaron, Keith, I don't know. And I think that was usually put together through the building, some kind of building
That's, that's all I'll think about, that's right back to next week. Any else, anything else that about?
Yeah, I'd like to just, one, one more thing. On the, we've had many discussions or issues regarding daily fines. I, I think it's important for everybody to understand, including me, and I'm asking you, Chris, you, when, when a citation is issued that, that has a daily fine provision attached to it, we, we do not, I believe, note that on the citation. Perhaps we do and perhaps we should. But the question is, when, when, if a person comes to pay that fine and a daily fine is attached to it and they come in a week later, should we calculate that's, at that point in time and say, well, this is seven times something and do it? Or do we wait until some future date? And then they're surprised by the fact that they've got a year's worth of daily citations to, or daily fines to issue? My feeling is that if we put it on the citation, it's up to the response, it's, it's, all the burden is on the person who cited. And if we, if we, and then when, if it does go to court, we don't have, we, we would specify on our submission to the court that here, here's how many days this thing has been in violation and here's the appropriate fine and let the judge decide. So.
It seems to me that the new process is addressing that and I think that Mark, with the new ordinance book or form and with the options that are available on there, important to cite the, the correct ordinance violation as well as the recurring, and I'll defer to Mark a little bit on the specifics of that, but he and I recently talked about that and, and it's incumbent upon them to know if we properly cite the violation and the date of it, those are, from there, yeah, it's, unfortunately, it's an open-ended amount unless and until a date certain comes, they either pay or some actions taken.
I, I understand. Did you say there's a new ordinance pertaining to this?
Not ordinance, a violation book, sorry, that.
Okay, so does that violation book clearly state the daily nature of some of these fines? From what I see, it does not.
I have to defer to Lou and Mark on that. I am not 100% certain on that.
Okay, if it doesn't.
We can put it on there, voluntary per day.
Do you do that in, have you done that in all the prior cases?
The new citation has, I believe it has that. Good timing.
I believe so. Hey, Chris?
Chris is there?
Yep.
Chris, I think in addition, what we need to do is that when we have the daily occurrence fines, and it's very seldom that Lou's been issued an ordinance citation for that, once he does, I believe, if it's not rectified within, say, three to five days, we need to get probably you to send a letter to the homeowner or the contractor. This way we've got a paper trail and a notice to them. What's your thoughts on that as well? If we reach out to you through email and every draft a letter.
Yep, I, I think that, in line with what Pete laid out before, but.
Yep, I think that, in line with what Pete laid out before, but based on my conversation with you before, I think keeping track of those and keeping them on the, in the pipeline, that'll move these along one way or the other.
And Pete, what we're referring to is that Excel spreadsheet that Renee's keeping. On that spreadsheet, once Lou gets the original citations into Deanna and Renee, we're tracking them now. So if there's one with daily occurring fines, and it is not paid within 72 hours, sometime after that, we'll talk to Chris through email, and then we just have to have a letter sent, and get notice to the owner.
And that sounds right, but going back to the actual citation that is issued, does it, does it contain all of that information that you got to be paid within 72, otherwise daily files will occur? Or does it just say ordinance?
Lou, thanks for leaving it on the citation.
I think we should change the citation book itself, so Lou doesn't have to write it down. But that's up to you guys.
Okay, I think we need to issue citations, and they were counted until the specific violation was corrected.
Okay, I just think, once it's noted on there, to this, we'll keep track of it, and I think the process we have now, it's going to work much better than what we had in the past. Lou's on board with the new tracking system and that, so we'll give it, you know, six months here, see how it goes.
The only thing, the only thing I've suggested to Chief is that myself, everybody's different, it's fine, but as Lou citations in that Excel spreadsheet, I'd like to get on the Excel spreadsheet. So I'll know up to date what happens. I think it's a great idea, and thanks for all this, I'll work together, and we'll go from there.
Okay, well, as Chris discussed, and I wanted to talk about this, we're going to eliminate the previous package, scanning the ticket and sending it to the end. I am now bringing her a copy of the ticket, but I want to continue to scan the ticket and send it out to the entire building commission. So everybody knows this ticket was, that saves us a step from the Excel spreadsheet being sent over and over again. You get an idea, Lou, by the way, to provide you to read the ticket. It's great way to share information, and you should do it, I agree.
I love, I love the Excel spreadsheets, oh, we're going to, I think, I'll make paper my better.
Well, we'll be updated.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah.
So when contractors come in, what's the line of communication at the moment? Because I usually say, same communication with very normal, you know, the IM, you call them, that's the number. What is the line of communication happening right now, how hard could it be to go with somebody?
I'd say, maybe you call Lou at this point, and then Lou, that's what she's, Lou can talk to me, I guess.
I don't know.
If I'm not familiar with this, I'll say, "Anywhere."
Okay.
Feel free, we can call anybody else on this committee, too.
Yeah.
Especially if I don't answer.
Yes, it was too big, so, I know where it went.
Okay.
Well, Mendoza, the gas fire, leak at 2516, that's the address. I got a story on, well, it's like, they already had the story on what took place there. Two of his guys, guys from Mendoza, guys were doing yesterday, in Palm Beach, and they were told by Steve that the gas was shut off by next stop, okay? He didn't call 911, he didn't call that, you know, before he did, identify the lines, he identified the water line at Palm Beach, and had Nixco turn the gas off, activated. But apparently, that didn't quite pop through, Nixco told me that Wilson had called them. So a week later, they're digging, they're ready to gas off. And let's just say, there's a language difference sometimes with some of his guys, and so they called Elijah, and he called 911, oh, no, he called Wilson, sorry, sorry, take it back, he called Wilson. So what's the timeline between when his gas worked right, Elijah, and when Elijah, no question, and when did Joe, why didn't he run into a gas leak, on the actual right? There's no time.
Was Elijah there?
Well, when he tried, yeah, when they break it, when they...
I'm just saying, second one I saw, that's all.
Who's Elijah?
Elijah and Dawson.
Oh, okay.
He's a contractor, he's a concrete contractor.
So, does he have any obligation to, he's the subcontractor?
He got a letter from the state of Indiana, and he scanned it through, and I tried to get it out of my phone, onto a piece of paper, and I had to resist, but I'm not getting it published here.
Okay, so let's bring this back, so we have all the information, you know, he was still in my state.
But I think the bottom line, which was said at the meeting a long time ago, is you have to do whatever it's called, you have to call those guys, and you have to do the dig before you do anything else. Well, Deanna, we gave you a letter for anything else, it's your obligation to do the dig.
But I, if one was mandatory, we didn't call. That's right, they called Nixco directly, and one before I called the director. My, and Nixco screwed up there.
It's not their responsibility to call the dig. The builder's responsibility to call.
Because first thing is that...
And that technical...
It's still a model.
Right, right. Well, what do you say, just look at the letter from state of Indiana before we make a decision at the next meeting? Is that all right?
I'll try and get over there.
Yeah, just send it out to us, and we can see. And we'll let you know, saying this is the letter you got.
Can I ask where we stand on the clarity property, we approved it, but there's still...
Yes, I'll just speak, I'll speak for myself.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and I don't know where we're at, and I'm wrong and wrong, but the meeting, I believe, at that meeting, the clarity property was approved. I, and Chris, I'm not speaking for you, you're right here, I just had a passing conversation with Chris at the home, and then Chris sent out an email to everybody, and I thought that maybe we did not vote properly for the clearing properly because of the ordinance. So, you know, I helped along, I talked to Larry about it, gosh, it might have been a while, a couple days ago, never having, maybe last Friday or something, whatever it was, and Larry's going to get back to me that this happened. So like I said, I know most of you disagree with me, and if I'm wrong, then that's fine, I'll take it, we'll go forward, but I just wanted, Chris, if you had mentioned, and I'm just not hoping you're anything, Chris, you had mentioned that possibly, that Joe had a point, and...
I have, I have no, as I indicated, everybody, I think there's some merits to Joe's point in a, in an ordinance that isn't perhaps drafted the best, but I don't think that his interpretation, as he reads it, I don't think is incorrect. I also think that, based on what Peter brought up with regard to the fire, right, that is also applicable. And so, there was a vote taken, and you guys can correct here, because my recollection isn't clear on, I don't think that you made a basis on a section of the code, and I could be wrong on that, but to the extent you want to clear it up, you have that opportunity, that I think you have the ability to approve that permit under the code, even based on the exception due to the fire, under that non-conforming ordinance.
So, Chris, the only thing, and I didn't bother you with that even, but I still have a question. If you feel that that fire ordinance is, that one, the non-conforming, I think it's one of the last ones, talks about the fire, and it says that if there's an increase in footprint, or an increase in volume, I don't see how that applies, but I would just be curious for an explanation, and whatever, you guys, whatever, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I don't think that there, and again, I'm the worst one to speak from recollection there, there is some language in there, as long as, essentially, they want you to build what was there, right? Or that language, that seems to be the intention on it. I don't know if anybody's represented that they're doing anything other than what was there, but that's...
Okay, maybe you want to clarify one, you'll prove this.
Yeah, I would not be in favor of revising that decision. You know, there's a second, like, in the meeting, I don't think we do it, because it's just an ad hoc thing to do. Anything else?
I'm only trying.
A second, I'm in favor, yeah?
Very good.
Joe?
Hi.
Joe? Joe, I'm going to do the next, I'm sorry. All right, where are you?